Five, please stand for the applause of the Regents.
A level Regent, you apply of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Calvin Coolidge, tell us what we believe.
At Calvin Coolidge, we believe in ourselves, in the law, and our religious community. We do our best we can be because we are Coolidge School.
And it'll take us right into this month's school recognition. Calvin Coolidge Elementary, welcome to Kelly Bowles' principal. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. That was a great way to start, babe. So, okay. Okay, great. Well, I'm Kelly Bowles for anyone who hasn't heard before, and I'm Calvin Coolidge. So, thank you for joining us tonight. And our focus this evening is going to be... So, our focus is going to be one of our goals from our school comprehensive education plan. And we are talking about our attendance rates. And our goal is to have a 92% or higher daily attendance rate. And we shared up here for you just to look at what our trend has been. And so, in 2022 to 2023, we are at 93.9%. Then we moved to 90% for the 2023, 2024 school year. And then we moved to 91% for the 2024, 2025 year. And it has been huge movements up and down, but we made our goal for this year to be 92%.
Kelly, could you put the mic closer? I don't know if everybody can hear you.
How's that?
We'll give you a different mic here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can talk really well. You've got a full room. I know you can, but some great celebrations. I want to make sure everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Hello. Okay, I'll use this one. So, that's much better. And so, one way that we were going to talk about to celebrate Coolidge is we're going to talk about some of our after-school programs because that seems to be an area that our students have been most interested in. And, you know, we find that, you know, with promising after-school programs, that's one way to entice an improvement in our attendance program. So, we want to foster positive relationships, increase our home-school communication through our after-school programs, and provide additional structure and recreation for our students. And our goal is to increase connection, engagement, and confidence within our Coolidge students and our families. So, one of our programs is we are offering Art Club. Right now, it currently has 25 students in it. And during their time with us, they're doing an exploration of artistic opportunities. They're working with wood, ceramics, painting, and they're enjoying influential artists and diverse learning styles with Lori Conrad, who is our art teacher, and she does it a couple days a week. Then we have Dana Brower, who is running Brains and Bodies, and she has 37 students, and they are involved in physical challenges, intellectual games. She puts some include some word searches, she does problem-solving, some mind challenges, and different opportunities for them. There's always a waiting list. They're very enthusiastic to join in those challenges with her. We also have intramurals that Dana Brower also runs. And during this time with her, the focus is on athletics and teamwork. And then a lot of our elementary schools have rooted. We, right now, are reaching 21 students through that program. They're focusing on STEAM, and they're really excited to come. And again, Mrs. Brower is a huge ring leader in that and works cooperatively with our Cornell Extension people in doing that. And then our partners is just about to get up and running. We have 24 students signed up currently. It's an opportunity for our faculty and families to get students together and engage in different ways through different things such as making food, desserts, scrapbooking, or doing different things around the world with tributes or different ideas around building with Legos, making pieces, exploring science opportunities. And so, that'll be up and running soon. And Calvin Coolidge has a really strong add as the line program. We have five teams from third to fifth grade. Thirty-five students are participating right now where they make their scripts, they create their designs and their scenery, and they do their costumes, they work very collaboratively, they think critically, and they're very creative, and they take it very seriously. So, I feel like these are great programs that helps bring them to one school every day, and it has shown in our data. Again, Mrs. Brower, she's doing Applause for Paws Talent Show every year. And so, this is a community service that they also do, and they raise money for the Humane Society. And the students end up doing a talent show at the end of the year, and they involve our community, and they get really excited about, you know, doing stuff for the shelters and gives them an opportunity to perform for the school. So, that's for the sixth off each year. And then tonight, we have a lovely opportunity with Mrs. Ty. And we have two students with us from Calvin Coolidge. We have Roma Marcello and Colleen Kibler and Mrs. Ty because we are now offering piano lessons. And she is doing 10 students right now and does lessons, and they're actually going to play a little bit for you. So, if Mrs. Ty could come up here to just introduce them and the song they're doing.
First, we have Roma, and her and I will be doing a duet. That would... Colleen, he wanted to play a song from his video game. I had never heard of it before. He introduced me to it. Don't remind me the name of the song. Hollow Knight, Silver Song is a video game.
One more call of the invention. And that concludes our celebrations at Calvin Coolidge. They've been working super hard. This has been a wonderful treat to come share them with you and what we've been up to. And we hope any one of you can come and stop by Coolidge at any point in time and see all the great things that our faculty and staff and kids have been up to. So, thank you for letting us share with you tonight.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we'll be observing a brief moment of silence in memory of four members of our school district community who are no longer with us. First one is Brayden Teeno. On October 28th, Brayden had passed away after a long courageous health battle, and we extend our deepest condolences to Brayden's family as they cope with this devastating loss. Longtime district employee Tara Yeoman had passed away. She was a parent educator with PAC program, dedicated her whole entire career to helping parents and son of our youngest children. We'll also remember Kathleen Broderick, who had passed away recently as well. Kathleen was a special education teacher at MacArthur, dedicated educator serving students at MacArthur and Ben Franklin for almost 40 years. And Shadi Alpool, a dedicated substitute teacher, passed away on November 10th. Frequent work as a substitute at the high school and both of the middle schools, and had the work done to PhD at Mays University, leaving behind three children. So, at this point, we'll observe a brief moment of silence in honor of these four members of our community. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for the distribution of our Patriot Pride Awards for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Seigl. I appreciate that. The timing of tonight's Patriot Pride is perfect because later on in the agenda tonight, we'll be hearing an update on athletics and wow, what a fall season. So, first, I believe I have a large number of members of our soccer team behind me. So, if the soccer team along with the coach, Quik, if they climb up, that would be fantastic. Come on over. Let our Boy of Education see your smile and your face and behind the amazing talent. So, you know, we say at the beginning of our Boy of Education meetings to recognize outstanding efforts of individuals in our district. And I have to say, nothing gives me more pride than to see a large number of students here tonight. And so, I'm presenting to you the Patriot Pride Award for our Boris varsity soccer team for becoming the Section Four Class Double-A Champions for the first time in our program's history. Congratulations to your coach, Quik. And you want to say a few words? Well, because this is truly monumental, and so I know there was an article, our department was sharing, that was in the Press and Sun, just to talk about, you know, the first step in program history. It's pretty incredible. So, if you wanted to just share a little bit about how this, you know, came about. Came it all along, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's been a great season for us. We, this group put in a lot of, after our hard work this year. We had more wins this season than the previous, I think, three or four years combined. And I just have to go down to the hard work that they put in as well as Jack and my assistant coach, JB head coach, and my other assistant coach wasn't here tonight, Pabbi Guinness. And just thank you for your guys for the support you've given us this year and for Dan for the amazing job he's done supporting us from athletic trackers standpoint. Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, Dan, do this for, and congratulations to you. Thank you so much for coming out. Of course, we also have other amazing teams. We also have some individual students do an incredible job on representing us. And so, next, I'd like to invite up to the podium Frances Miller and her coaches. So, we have Coach Ken Starr, who also may look familiar because he's also one of our fabulous music teachers at the English and High School at Lyd's Cozelle, who is coaching us for us as well as providing physical education instruction for the district. And Frances. So, Frances, let me just read this Patriot Pride award to you. It's in recognition of your outstanding performance and excellence in swimming the 100-yard breaststroke and Section Four Champion. You made us Patriot proud. Congratulations on your remarkable accomplishment.
So, I just wanted to give Frances some credit. She has worked incredibly hard this whole season, and it's really nice to see her be recognized and be able to get a little farther for how hard she's worked. I wanted to also thank Ken and the Athletic Department and just the district for supporting us and getting us to this point. We're really proud of her, and we can't wait to see how far she goes.
And the pride moments don't stop. And so, I understand that Brady McManus is not able to be... Oh, yes, there's another. Oh, he had another commitment as well as one of his coaches, Andy Hall. But do we have... Can you take it? I didn't know Dave Walker was able to be there. Okay. So, Mr. Miller, the other individual we're going to recognize is Brady McManus, and recognize that his outstanding performance and excellence in golf for becoming the Section Four Champion. He makes us proud. Again, congratulations to Brady. I know you'll give this to him and his coaches, but thank you so much for your leadership of the program.
Next up is the first public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board and help with speed, you have three minutes to do so. By law, we are not permitted to address personnel or individual student matters in open session. Once you're acknowledged, please state your name and relationship to the district. Anything required is followed up after the meeting. We ask that you contact the board clerk who is sitting right behind me at 762-8100, extension 319. Just give a moment for the room to declare our person, then before you go ahead.
I'm sure they won't hear about this anymore. Hi, good evening. I'm Dr. Missy Kirby. I earned my PhD in Education Policy Planning and Curriculum Leadership at the country's largest, sorry, excuse me, oldest public university, the College of William and Mary. I've been an educator on three continents for nearly three decades. I'm a Southside homeowner, voter, and active nonprofit volunteer, advocate, and mentor in this city that I call home. First, a few observations from this calendar year. I never expected me to talk about dignity, which I brought up 16 times to this body since late 2023. And you're correct. For the first time at the insistence of a newly-elected school board member, homelessness and dignity made the agenda, and was even followed up by a special meeting. That is the power of the local vote and the dignity that our community deserves. So, thank you. It is undignified, however, to allow children to enter the fourth and fifth grade without functional diversity and numeracy. As I said in September, play needs to be brought back into pre-kindergarten, kindergarten for young children to learn the value of community and cooperation. Play-based models support socio-emotional and cognitive development, fine growth motor skills, verbal communication, and so much more. So, that was the culture of digital free early childhood and play-based education. Your racist practice of social promotion is undignified. Simply passing students to the next grade who fail or never even attend persists. And you all who lead our public school system share the bulk of responsibility for the low levels of literacy in our city. Historically speaking, this district has not made students of color welcome. I've spoken about this from the high school student walkout over 50 years ago to the treatment some families have experienced from school staff who are trying to address issues their child is experiencing, usually around harmful language. I hear you speak here about the lack of parent engagement. Can you not see that these things are related? And yet, y'all, and not necessarily the current y'all at the table, but the positions they have to build. How have you not learned that you need to meet people where they are? You need to build relationships in the city you work in. I would begin in your schools and working right out into the communities where we live. I heard a great idea to facilitate this. Every single district office employee worked two days a month in school, everyone from the top down. Office support staff can support in the offices, other staffs in cafeteria, the handsomely-paid high-level administrators can step back into the classroom for a day, possibly allowing teachers a much muted time to contact parents, arrange resources, plan stipulating, lessons, or input data. Or fill in the job of substitute teacher wherever is needed, and not all in the elementary schools. Don't hang out with the secondary crowd as the normal 13-year-old there keeps fun. Just do not count that spot.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come up and speak to the board? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close this public comment portion of the meeting. I move on to... Approval of the minutes from the work session and regular meeting held October 21st of 2025. I have a motion to approve and accept the minutes moved by Albert, submitted by Juzo, on paper. Aye. That takes us to the financial report from the month of October 2025. Brayden, comments or questions on the financial report?
John Reed is here.
Any questions for John, one once, twice? I'm seven eight, unfinished business. I'll turn it over to you, Shante, for the second read of new policy 3311 and revised policy 5630.
Thank you. The district interacts with area one Boise's policy services, which provides updates to the policies and their correspondent administrative regulations through the lens of New York State Education Law or changes in New York State regulations. Each year, the superintendent provides the recommendations for newer revised policies to be responsive to changes in legislation and landscape. The committee also moves through the current policies to make sure they have been thoroughly vetted. The policy committee can make recommendations for the board for adoption, newer revised.
I'm sorry, I interrupted. I feel like I'm a bit lost, but I just want to make sure that I understand where we are. So, it sounds like we kind of moved into the update from the policy committee, but we should be on seven eight and 3311, 5630. I'm sure we saw on the one thing, but I don't know if you want to do that.
I think we just jumped over to the second read of the policy. You did a great job.
Thank you.
You're two executive agenda items. But I think you skipped over to the second one, and that's your name on it. And that's why I was making sure that we did a second read of policy.
Thank you.
3311 and 5630.
In accordance with New York State Public Officers Law, this policy establishes a process to notify district employees when the district is responding to requests for their disciplinary records. Let's go. This policy applies to all current former employees of the school district whose disciplinary records may be subject to public disclosure under the freedom of information law. Foil. What constitutes an employee disciplinary record? For purposes of this policy, disciplinary records are any record created in the framework of a disciplinary proceeding, including but not limited to: A) The complaints, allegations, and charges against an employee; B) The name of an employee complained of or charged; C) The transcript of any disciplinary trial or hearing, including any exhibits introduced at such trial and hearing; D) The disposition of indisciplined proceedings; and E) The final written opinion or memorandum supporting the disposition and discipline imposed, including the district's complete factual findings and analysis of the conduct and appropriate discipline of the covered employee. Notification upon release of disciplinary records. When the district releases an employee's disciplinary records in response to a fuller request, it will promptly provide written notification to the affected employee unless the request... the request is from the employee for their own records. For current employees, this notification will be sent to the employee's work email address or, if unavailable, their home address on file with human resources. For former employees, the notification will be sent to the employee's last known home address on file with human resources. The district will make every reasonable effort to notify former employees and will document the next steps. Take it to do so. Continue. Notification disclosure of employee disciplinary records. Content of notification: The notification will include a brief description of the records released. This notification is for informational purposes only and does not require employee consent. Its purpose is to ensure employees are aware of the disclosure. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So then it will take us to the next item on the agenda, which is a report from our student school board member. So welcome, welcome back, Sam.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be here.
From the student's take, thank you. What would you prefer? So you want to actually go to the board initially, like she has some... Samantha has some...
I don't have anything that I can speak to.
This is my...
Perfect.
Thank you, Samantha. So Samantha and I have been having a gentleman meetings, which has been fantastic, and we kind of go with the agenda, which is part of the process that I shared with having a student school board member. And tonight, she's going to be sharing the first report on some areas that glow. He makes great work that's to government's doing, being nice, and then some opportunities to grow. And so kind of set the stage for you, Sam, and take it away.
Thank you. So my first area of love and what we're proud of at Binghamton High School is our homecoming events in October. We had great attendance and behavior at our Friday night football game in October, and the next day, we had a really successful homecoming dance. Ms. Petron and student government did a fabulous job organizing everything, and it was overall a success. Now we want to move on to our community Thanksgiving dinner, which is next Thursday on Thanksgiving Day. It's the 30th year of being this event on for high school. Every year, we serve pot meals to community members, and this year, we're also giving toys to children who come in and attend to families. We're looking at about 150 volunteers, both student, staff, and faculty. And we also were trying to get more of the district involved, not just Binghamton high school students. So we're also displaying elementary students' artwork as decorations during the dinner as well. There's just a lot of need in our community and also heartwarming for me as a student coordinator, seeing it all come together on the day of the Thanksgiving dinner, seeing the smiles on people's faces, and seeing students speak with community members as well, and just providing a loving and warm environment for people who might otherwise be spending holidays alone. I do want to thank Mr. G, our advisor, as well as all of our volunteers and the committee donors, donors that helped us all of this together. Now, I would like to move on to areas for growth or where I want to see improvement for our high school moving forward. Last month's discussion on supporting our homeless students got me thinking about what we can do within our school, and then I found how many amazing support systems we have, from the food pantry, which gets a truckload of food and shipment every week, to our homeless student coordinator, to the washers and dryers on the first floor. There are so many support systems and resources, and I want to make sure with student government that these resources are being taken advantage of. There's numerous reasons for why it may not be, from like people not knowing about them, not knowing where the food pantry may be, when what class periods may be open, or any other considerations for why people may not be reaching out for help or making that initial connection. So I want to see student government work for a way that we can minimize the barriers and build more trust between students, get help as many students as possible. And lastly, one other area for growth is our communication to students. So when there's an incident in or around school, there is a community alert that goes out to families. And speaking as a student, we don't really get to be in the know until we leave school that day. They're students, and we talk, we theorize with each other, and we often don't really know the truth and what's going on. So I spoke with Dr. Thompson and want to discuss with Mr. Richmond more how we can have communications and email, probably the school email, because we don't have our phones with students, they're on their couches. So we'll be alerts going to your emails going to students just to inform us and keep us aware and safe of what's going on in our community. Yeah.
So Samantha, I want to speak to the district chairman and if there are any questions. The conversation or communication is, the word goes, we send out plenty of alerts whenever we have police, fire, ambulance evacuations, and so on, and inform immediately our families that they are able to understand, you know, they're dragged by, or the students come home, and they talk about an experience. But as I was talking with Sam, you know, as high school students, you know, not that it's never been done, right? It's never been, it's never ever been done in the past, but we live in such a different world of social media. And certainly, if the parents are getting in, then they're talking about, hey, I understand such and such has happened at school, but the student sitting there, I don't know what you're talking about, because that will leave the building for ten minutes, right? So we're in conversation, we tried last week for the first time sending out the student email, which also may then support another area. Sam's concern is, do students know the resources that are available, or do they have access to understand that things are happening? Lots of TVs in the high school where things are flashing and communicating, but just another means of communication. So I'm anxious to hear, not necessarily this moment, but to hear more, because we're going to continue to do, to do just that, have a student version, so we have a parent version. And the process is such that we send it to the families, and then the principals of the building copy that and send it to faculty, so the faculty know what was sent out to families. But what, how can we, what can we be communicating to the students? So they still feel safe, right? At what time during the day do we then communicate that? If there's a need for a hold of place, which is an example, because if an ambulance comes for a member of the Binghamton high school community, just simply sharing that the hold of place was due to a member of the high school community in need, right, in need of medical treatment. It's helpful for the students to know that, that's why we had to stay in the classroom for ten minutes. It is not done systematically. I don't know if the district communicates it to the students systematically. I thank Sam for bringing this to our, to my attention and just really getting a lot more thought. So I don't have the system down, you know, 100%, because there was some alerts I was reading to her, and she said, I wouldn't want to know that, you know, in that, that moment, but just broadly, is it student concerns, community concerns, is it building concerns? Is it, you know, smoke detected because of their poster? And that's how we're, you know, going out for a very long, later on, when they, when they come back off, so our teachers are sharing the information, but just so that communication was consistent. So I thought that was a great insight. And also, I compliment Sam. When I met with her, there was an opportunity for a $1,000 grant to be concluded to contribute to the Thanksgiving dinner, and she got right on it and completed it, which realized another $1,000 to the foundation, to the Binghamton City Foundation. So they recognized the need and contributed that additional money, so I want to make that moment as well. And that's all. Any questions or thoughts?
Samantha, thank you for the update. The Thanksgiving dinner, you know, we're the only school district, I think, in the entire southern tier region, maybe in the state. For 30 years, we've been doing this, and I was in on the original year when it started. It's so great to see the students doing what they're doing. So I want to highly commend your work and acknowledge all the students. I know you will do this as a student leader, that you're doing this. It's a tremendous outgiving to the community. And the graduates, when they graduate, when they're asked to think back, what was the most memorable thing that happened to you in four years of Binghamton High? And they'll always say, participating in the Thanksgiving dinner every year. So it's highly, highly effective. It's a wonderful contribution to the community. It's a lot of hard work, but please convey on behalf of the board to the students that we thank them for what they're doing. It's very important.
Of course, thank you.
So we have an unsolicited testimonial for the Thanksgiving dinner, I'm going to put it on to this, but I volunteered at it every year for like the last five years. And if you haven't done it before, and I know you were there last year, I would highly encourage it. It's really, really fun. Students do a great job. Mr. Janini does a great job organizing it, and the volunteership I did was something like five hours last year, and it went by so quick. And the people come, they're so grateful, and it's nice to be able to fill this need in the community and, you know, see what's been brought out over the last couple months. And, you know, the difficult situation that has existed is becoming even more difficult in terms of, you know, people in the community being able to have food and dealing with food insecurity. So this is a nice thing we can provide. I wish we could do it every day, because there's so much need for it, but for this honesty, it really does make it brighter for a lot of people. So thank you for all your work, and it should be great to see all those couples gather next Thursday.
If you're interested in volunteering, just let Sanya and I know, and we'll get your names so that they're prepared to give you a place to sort of, otherwise you can wander around. I wish your mom wanted to do this, but I'd like to actually.
And I would like to add to that. I was wandering around the room, I was kind of acting like a hostess more than anything, and the Sisters Club was getting away to toys and things that made her wrapped in comic book paper, which was really cool. And I remember a gentleman came up and he said, do you have any gloves? Because my grandson doesn't have any. And that was such a cool thing for you guys to do. The amount of people who were so needy in that group was heartbreaking, and what you guys did was absolutely amazing. Thank you so much for all you did.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we got a foreshadow of this during the many awesome Patriot Pride Awards that were given out earlier tonight, an update on athletics with our AD, Dan Miller.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Miller, the Director of Athletics, and just wanted to give an overview on what we've been up to so far in the fall season this year. Picture is our soccer team, which was here just after they won the section championship this year. So currently in our program, we have 27 varsity teams, 19 junior varsity teams, and 26 modified teams. We are also really trying to increase our partnership with the city of Binghamton, and if you can clip to the next slide, and work with them on promoting different sporting camps and clinics throughout the year. This is the latest flyer for sports clinics. Happens a couple doors down here on Holly Street at the old St. Mary's Gymnasium, and they're going to be offering baseball, softball, basketball, and cheerleading clinics this winter. We're also still in talks of trying to possibly get a youth soccer clinic going this winter as well indoors. It just is dependent upon the amount of indoor volleyball teams that the city league has, but if they are not filling out that schedule, the city and Shane Hurd have also looked into adding a soccer clinic for us this winter, which would be huge for our soccer programs. The idea of partnering with the city and working at the youth level is obviously to get as many of the elementary-age students involved before they get to the modified junior varsity and varsity level. Just trying to increase the numbers at the elementary level. Some of our more recent celebrations, the first three are from last year. Parrot Bryant was from girls wrestling, finished third in the state last year in her weight class. Milo Wilson, we had eight athletes go to states for track and field. Milo Wilson finished third in the high jump. Our boys' basketball team won the state championship. And then the three that were honored here tonight, the boys' soccer team running section four, Brady McManus, the individual golf champion of section four, the team finished in second place by a stroke, so they're one stroke away from being section champions as well. And girls swim, Francis, Francis is still here, Francis leads Thursday to go to states. She's competing in the 100-yard breaststroke, so good luck, Francis, this weekend. And moving forward on the next slide, just expectations for our varsity coaches, just to be visible at all levels. And again, we, you know, I talked about that a little bit, it goes more than just the levels that you're coaching with, with the school level, but really reaching into that community connection development as well. I know to increase numbers in the soccer program, the soccer coaches, both the boys' and girls' soccer coach have been pushing to add that winter clinic, but they also have plans in the spring to go into the elementary schools and do clinics themselves in the spring and try to do some Saturday work leading into the fall next year, when the city runs their youth programs for soccer. So trying to get a bank of names in the spring for the city youth program of the elementary schools. And both of our varsity coaches in soccer have made a commitment to do that. So just creating those partnerships, working with coaches, obviously at the JV and modified level, but again, at the youth level and trying to increase participation there as well. As far as player development, you know, recruitment plays a key piece in that, the coaches getting out to the middle schools to get the modified students interested in coming out and signing up for sports, and talked already about the youth program. BX Sports with Robbie Baxter has come in to work with some of our athletes. He also has come in and did a training for our coaches this past summer as well, and showing them some skills and drills that they can work on, kind of like a turnkey training, where he trained the coaches, and now the coaches can go back and train the athletes and give them training that they would get just as they were, they were going to BX Sports. We are currently in talks with Guthrie on adding athletic trainers to support our entire sporting community. Ben Robinson from Guthrie is in the middle of trying to draw something up and get us some athletic trainers that would cover all of our sporting events for us. All of our programs really do a great job at off-season access to training. They're currently running programs, our lacrosse program is working on Sundays. Our youth teams are utilizing our fields and our spaces on weekends, and it's really just doing a lot of those camps and off-season leagues to promote the sport when the sport's not in season. Our coaching development, obviously, the recruitment of coaches, we, the positions are posted annually, so our coaches apply every year for the job. They're constantly out, you know, working on coaching certifications and attending clinics, trying to increase their knowledge base to become better as well. And also connecting our athletes with colleges and college coaches to help get our student athletes to the next level. Not everyone's going to be a Division One athlete, but that doesn't mean you can't find your own niche at a level in college and be successful and have a good time and continue your athletic career in some possible way. Some of our facilities development, our video boards, so we have new video boards at Alumni Field and also in the gymnasium. The highlights of the video boards for us so far, there's huge capabilities with them that are, we haven't tapped into fully yet, but we're looking forward to doing that. But what we've been able to do so far is we have videoed some of the students playing the National Anthem, so before our football games, before our volleyball games in the fall, we would, the National Anthem was actually our students singing the National Anthem on the video board, which was nice. We also had a hype video that was produced, and we also had our students read the sportsmanship policy for section four. So traditionally, what would happen is whoever the announcer was for the game would read the sportsmanship policy, but now... But now we have recruited, we have video recorded students reading that policy from the different sports of the season and played that video message. So it's definitely eye catching that the people in the gymnasium or at the field lock in on the video board and really listen to the message when they have that visual of our students reading that message on the board. We also have the new field at West Middle School. That was a, we've been utilizing that. We utilized it in the fall, we moved our JV soccer games to West Middle School. Traditionally, they would play a JV game at 5:30 at Alumni. Varsity would start after that, usually about 7:30, sometimes 8 o'clock. Makes for a late night, especially for the team that's traveling. And that's traditionally how the, how soccer has been scheduled in our area. But we've had the ability this year to schedule our JV games for 3:30, 5 o'clock after school up west. Varsity game can then start whenever it wants to at Alumni. So that's been beneficial for us. And we've gotten great feedback from other schools. As I went to the athletic director meetings and asked the other athletic directors about how do they like that? Because it could become a burden to for bussing if you've got to send your teams to two different locations. But the feedback was positive of being able to get both games started early and everybody home earlier that night. So the feedback's been good on that. Our new track and field at Alumni Stadium, the track was, the resurfaced. The field, the turf was put down and the fieldhouse was renovated. And it's just absolutely beautiful inside. It just, the upgrades have been tremendous for our athletes and for our coaches at Alumni Field. Anticipated renovations at VHS, in the small gym. I know they're in the process of trying to secure a grant to create a weightlifting facility or a new weight room in a small, that's currently in the small gym at the high school. We are currently trying to repurpose locker rooms that we've had. The visiting teams currently come in and go upstairs into the physical education locker rooms. But we've really, what we think have found a better space for them down in the pool locker rooms. And we're trying to give them a makeover before this winter season starts. So when visiting teams come in to play us, they have a positive experience of what's happening. And their facilities are top notch as well. So not only are we looking to improve the facilities for our own athletes, but we think it's important to showcase to outside teams and visiting teams coming in and make sure that their facilities are top notch as well.
And I can just interject, this is an enormous amount of space. At one time it looks as though it's not dependent. Every student took this education at the locker room, in addition to like a school locker. So when you walk through this space on the second, it's overwhelming. And can be repurposed. So that major renovation would be part of a capital project. Our director of facilities has done an amazing job going into the existing spaces. And it's paint and painting tile and so on, like making it a welcoming space. So I think if you're vision around that, but just wanted to, there's future work to be done, capital improvement work to be done at the high school in that place.
Some promotions for our athletic department, our senior portrait. So when a, on senior night, we will have Jeff Miller, our photographer that the district's been working with for years, make senior banner, banners for the athletes, which everyone enjoys. It's kind of like a poster for our senior athletes. And they'll get hung up at the senior game and then after the senior game, they're able to take them with them. Athletic profiles have been going on YouTube for a few years now. So on our YouTube channel for the school district, they will have profiles not only on athletes, but also some of our coaches as well. There is a new eagle mascot in the works that is coming that should be here fairly soon. I know that was ordered last year and is currently in the process of development.
It's a bit of a surprise, so I'm going to share the whole thing. But hopefully we're able to reveal it at a home basketball game. Maybe private, private high school and then follow by a basketball game, so.
Sure. And then the last two are kind of hand in hand. Their athletic study hall once a week that we do at the high school level. It is just a day where classic, our practices start a little bit later in the evening. And students have the opportunity to attend the study hall to get caught up on their academics. And it has paid dividends in the sense that we are a scholar, athlete school of excellence. And what that is a term for, what that means is that 75% or more of our athletic teams have achieved the honor roll. So again, out of our 27 varsity teams, 24 of them have qualified for honor roll. So that makes us a school of excellence within New York State.
And Dan, also to those, to your team for getting the, let's say roster is filled, to get that to guidance counselors in the middle school and the high school level. And so what happens is there's a period 10 in the scheduler which the students are then added to their coach. And then the coach has access to get into school tools, but they can be monitoring the progress of students as well. Students, of course, they can talk to that student, we communicate to them. And also the teachers know, are they on an athletic team? So putting all of that into place is really super important to be able to maintain the expectations around being an athlete and scholar.
Thank you very much.
Dan, just a few things. Thank you for presentation tonight. Your leadership as a principal is certainly showing up and the leadership that you've taken over the athletic department. For, just so you know this, there's no end of the day for an athletic director. It's 24/7. It's Saturday, Sunday, it's evenings, our teams are away. So I want to mention that, that your work is very appreciated. The transition's gone very well. Just a couple of things, the district, and I'm really big on this because I've coached and I've been with the district a long time. Some of the reasons why we've been losing at uncertain levels at varsity is because we haven't paid attention to the important development of athletic skills at the modified and at the youth level, the K through 5 level. We're a Class A school, our competition, as Dan knows, is very, is very good. You know, Alamo Corning Horseheads, those schools start in kindergarten with baseball, football, basketball. So I just want to say this, in the last two years, under the leadership of our superintendent and you and the city youth director, we've come a long way in having camps, clinics, winter, fall, spring. If you go online, you'll see the participation has been outstanding. That's how we're going to make a difference in winning and being champions. That's how you become a champion. Those kids have those skills at that level and it makes a huge difference later on, as you well know. So just thank you for your hard work and things are moving in a very positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
So two things. So one, the relationships that are growing with the city of Binghamton and youth programs. Does that mean we're going to get closer to the PB kids to being able to actually be junior patriots? Like, I know the basketball kids get to be junior patriots, but like the football kids and like the other teams, will they get one step closer to being able to wear the Binghamton bib like the other districts do?
Yeah, so that becomes a little tricky. That's the goal, is we want everyone to feel all the way down to the elementary level of being a part of that. We also have to be aware of the city a lot. We are, we're different from just about every other youth program that we compete against and that's in the area. If you go to any other school district or any other area where they have the youth sports at the elementary level, they are paying to play those sports. The one thing about the partnership with the city of Binghamton and it's unique to us, we are the only place in the area where everything is absolutely free for our students. So the city is not going to charge a single penny for the youth sports and I commend them for that. But it also presents a little bit of a challenge for us in trying to get our brand in there too as patriots at that level.
The other piece that I could add, having been part of the basketball and growing that, is the district, the school district had for basketball for grades 3, 4, and 5. And that was led by the teachers and some administrators within the district. It was a district program, like an after-school program. The school districts cannot pay for youth sports. It starts at the modified level, it draws, the state financial pieces draws the line there. So while we try to support having patriots within our city, right? Because we want our young students who are in athletics. We also have to be careful that people don't believe, they understand that it's a city team and not a school district team. We have run across this over the years. There was this particular sport that branded everything. They were a travel team that branded everything. It made it look like it was Binghamton's school district. It was, they developed their own booster, they did their own fundraising. And then there was a question regarding how those monies were being utilized. My parents hadn't paid to be part of that team. And they came to the district, but we had nothing to do with that. Our parents fought with the district, right? And so we just have to be, I think it's also part of the, the junior patriots, the one where it's competitive and they said, there is, there are some fees associated with them. They have to start to charge because of some transportation and some, the district does not contribute any money to that program anymore. We started, because it was a transition from our after-school program to having kids, that goes gap through sort of grade 5, grade 6 before they compete at the middle school level. So to try to work with the city and as Dan shared earlier, having the city have more locations throughout the city for youth to come and play together and promote that. And there's a lot of collaboration that takes place to make that happen. Also, the city does not pay their coaches. And so that's the other consequence of not charging for play. So the other communities charge for play and the coaches get stifled. So you're asking people to volunteer to be part of that system. And while our coaches do a lot over the summers, trying to contribute to their camps, they don't have the time because they're doing their own player development to city camps as well as our own camps. So we're doing the best that we possibly can to extend them. But there's also a body of families out there around basketball that are volunteering their time to create that junior patriot, all those teams. So what it really takes is to take, you know, some of the, what the city's doing and get some youth engagement with the families that are going to say, yeah, we'll take on, you know, lacrosse is another example. Lacrosse has a very strong parent group that is developing right now and working with students outside of the city to develop their own plan. So, yeah.
Okay. I was going to say, because my kids started off with city Parks and Rec kids and now they're modified JV and varsity players. And like, I'll use Q as an example, who started with lacrosse. In his eighth grade year, he played, instead of playing modified lacrosse, he played JV lacrosse because of the development that he gets from that program that he's been playing for, at that point, probably three years at that point, you know? And I see that like even with now with the third and fourth grade team, they went all the way. They almost won. They were one game off going to that final championship game, you know? And a lot of those kids, like they start getting that development at that young age. And those are skills that contribute to our district's teams when they're able to start playing modified JV and, you know, and varsity sports. So, I don't know, I feel like, and I'm, wouldn't really, even though the coaches are volunteering at the city level, would they really not still want to contribute to that program if that program became a part of the district and still not want to volunteer?
The youth programs can't become part of the district. The youth programs, modified and the JV and varsity.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, because you're saying that like because they're volunt, like because it's not paid for.
The city programs.
Yeah, the city program's not paid for, the coaches are volunteering and stuff like that. So even if they would be able to collaborate with the school and the, where they can finally be actually like patriots, be able to wear the schools be and be considered patriots instead of Parks and Rec. Like, do you really think that they still want to, want to still volunteer as coaches?
No, I was just, my main reason, the point that Dan was making, that our community youth sports is run differently than you would go to other neighboring, disneighboring camps. That they're paying, they're charging fees and giving some level of compensation for the coaches. That's all, just in terms of, why don't we have a city-run golf team or a city-run tennis team or a city, we have all those other teams like we currently have with PB football or with basketball. There's just other, if you go to other areas, you'll see those things are developed across a large variety or variety of sports. And that may be one of the reasons, I don't know that, but it's just a difference between the two. And we just have to, again, we have to make sure our branding is distinct. And we absolutely come up with, come up with that, using the beat. We have to make sure that people know the difference between, that's a modified team, a coach that we are, all of our processes are in place to support versus the city-owned team, that's all. And Scott is in trouble with that.
Definitely want to make a few quick comments. I wrote down quite a lot, I'll keep just the most important things. This, I'll move on to a presentation after this that's potentially be really long and a lot of discussion. I echo the comment of soccer penalty regarding player development. And a lot of great things are happening in the department for sure. And you have noticed just from my own observations, you've got some teams that were not as competitive and they're all played by kind of similar problems, like less players just coming out. I think just the demographics, say, football for instance, just doesn't attract as many kids as basketball. I think just because of just the kids that we have in the district and what they're interested in playing. And sometimes, you know, with these sports that don't do as well, it's hard to get the kids to come out. The ones that do, I think, just don't really show the commitment level that we'd like to see despite the great work the coaches are putting into doing it. So it'd be great to see that turnaround. For the board tables, speaking for me personally, I always feel like I would support, you know, pretty much anything that will help us to grow in terms of recruiting and player development because that's the lifeline of this thing, starting young. And these programs that, you know, are exhibiting what I feel is like a best practice and doing this very well, that we're starting to emulate these methods more here. And, you know, basketball, for instance, we've seen a turnaround in a short amount of time. It's very, very encouraging. It would be great during the regular season itself to see road games that take a little bit less travel. So like football had a road game to Rome, it's two hours each way and then come back. And they got exempted from the first half of the school day, the following day, which is a very hit-making thing to do. It'd be great to get back earlier and get the whole day. So we appreciate it, especially being a football family, having that flexibility. But for students first, unless it's like a state playoff that requires having to travel, it'd be nice to stay a little bit closer to the city here and not have that instructional time disrupted. From the other categories, Chair of the Audit Committee, one of the things we look at are the coaching certifications and the tightness of the coaches in completing them. We've definitely seen great starts forward the last couple of years in terms of, and I know there are a couple of sports where they had an additional amount of health training that was added to the already pretty lengthy suite of trainings we have. And as board members, we have to do some of the same ones ourselves, it's quite a lot. So we've definitely seen a lot of improvements there. And I think one thing I would just like to see, and you know, it's really where the parent had more than a board member, is some greater consistency in the coaches' engagement with the players. I know we're trying to develop a skill here, especially because, you know, these kids, many of them are years away from going to college. And parents are out of the equation, except we're on the check of college. And all the communication becomes the professor or the administrators and the student because that's the actual person we're interfacing with. So we're trying to develop these skills in the kids. And get them to talk to the coaches and develop the confidence, communication skills and the ability to articulate what it is that could be an issue. But the parents sometimes feel frozen out of that. And some coaches are a little bit more welcoming than others, having that first meeting for parents. And most parents, we don't want to get involved in. And I understand like, you know, there's an intention because they think, you know, we want to get the business of saying, "My kid's not playing enough." Or, "We want to make the lineup for you, we're telling you how to coach." "I'm not a coach, I don't like to do that part." Just like I want you to tell me how to parent, you know, we can keep those two worlds separate, but support each other just the same. So I think that's something, and I'd like to see more of it. And some people just have more of a, I don't say more they have for it because it sounds like a lousy way to say that. But I think they're a little more proactive in trying to build those connections with the parents because we're all here to help. And I can tell you almost none of us really want to be disruptive in any way. So sometimes there's that little apprehension that we should be there or like a, sometimes it's almost like an adversarial nature depending on the person. So those are my two cents I said I'm doing with. So, um, those are my two cents I set out doing quickly, and I felt like it was more than I wanted to. Does anybody else have anything?
I definitely agree that, that communication piece with the coaches is extremely important. Um, I know, I first, I'm extremely involved in my kids' course education, all that, and I know, I find it extremely frustrating when it's like, I don't know when the signups are supposed to start, and last minute, now I have three boys coming at me like, "Hurry up and sign me up for this, like, right now, and I can't practice or I can't play." And I'm just like, I'm in the middle of doing X, Y, and, but if I had a heads up ahead of time knowing, like, I need to take care of this, then it would be a lot less annoying when that time comes.
What would, what would be the best way to communicate? Because currently, we're, we're doing it, um, you know, like, online, and the coaches are sending out communication pieces, and we'll do it online, if it'd be more so now? Like, will it be posted on the district website? Is there any, like, form of communication that would be better, or?
I don't know if there's one, like, I know for, especially for new coming parents, that communication piece is going to be a little bit more tricky for them, but for me personally, I don't, you can send me a text message, you can send me an email, like, some of the coaches still use Remind, like, I'm not really picky of how you tell me, I just need to know. Send me a letter, send them a note in their backpack, I don't know, something. Like, um, so that way I know ahead of time, like, okay, I need to make sure I'm taking care of it. Um, for the most part, and if the, if the relationship with the city was like, superb, for the most part, you have an idea of the kids that are coming in. Um, you know, when the modified, because the kids that are playing our modified program, except for the ones that pay to go play elsewhere, but for the most part, you have a general idea of the kids that are coming in for the modified kids, and you are building a relationship with the coaches and stuff like that. Um, but, I mean, definitely relationship is definitely, definitely a thing, um, the better the relationship is with the city, that way you have a general idea and it makes it easier, so that way we know, um, but, I don't, send me a text, it really, I'm not picky. Like, I'm not picky, just send them a note and, like, something, um, so that way I know. Um, but.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, we'll turn it back over to the superintendent, and I understand we have a few members of the architecture firm here tonight, so we'll be talking about the, the, good old Roosevelt project.
Me too, and I'm going to have C S L to go over there because I'm in the last, last part of the presentation, uh, but this is going to be an update on where we are with design, a little round timeline, and then next steps for the faculty and staff and students. So, I invite Greg from C S L, and he has along with him tonight, Tom Rosenbaum, who's also the architect of that firm.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, discuss with you today. It's been, it's been a minute since we've been here, I think it, I didn't been around in the book, I can't remember if we came here or not, but, uh, we're excited to show you, to show you what we've been doing and where the project stands, so. I'm going to slide thirty minutes.
Is the clicker working? There we go.
Okay, so, okay, so today, we'll, we'll give you an update on the building plans, uh, where the design stands for that. We have some exterior images and some interior images of, of the spaces. Um, a high level of, of the, uh, project timeline, as we're wrapping up the design and the construction implementation phase, getting ready for a building permit. And, uh, Dr. Thompson will then talk a little bit about the community engagement and the communication plan that's going to be rolled out in the future, so. If you remember, uh, that's your, your floor plan of your existing building. Uh, this space to the right, that red shaded bar, that's the existing three-story classroom, uh, that's being taken down, so everything to the left of the plan remains. Images of the building, right, so you have a, basically a, a brick, uh, brick building throughout, and that's the classroom addition that, that will be coming down. So the new plan, um, a couple of key components that we're looking at here, and again, this was what we discussed pre-referendum, but kind of developing these neighborhoods, right? We clustered the classroom by grade level together, um, and developed learning commons, so a common space within each, within each classroom, weighing grade level. Um, we, we grouped all the community spaces together and innovation spaces, uh, spaces together. So what you see here on the plan, the pre-K and kindergarten is down in the bottom right, shaded orange. Um, we've got two pre-K rooms and four kindergarten classrooms. Moving up the plan, the areas in green, that's your four first grade classrooms, and then second and third is, is shaded in wood. And the color coding, we'll see later on, we get into, into your renovation, but we're color coding each area of the building. So as the, you'll see that the floor finishes and the, and the paint that's used, so each student, as you move through, you'll be able to have, be away finding where you are in the building. Second floor, uh, we have the fourth and fifth grade, um, back is shaded the, uh, the purplish Same plan, so, the blue shade, that's your existing building, uh, the red, red shaded area, that's the, the building addition, and the darker shaded gray areas, you can see on the right side, that's the new, um, uh, drop-off loop that's being created, so that's a, a road that cuts into the site so we can have safe drop-off and pickup there as needed. On the opposite side, on the existing parking lot side, we have the new parking lot, uh, going out the top of the dais, so it gives you another exit and entry point onto the site. Um, we've got two playgrounds, uh, reconstructing what, uh, basketball work. So the kindergarten and pre-K kinder, uh, playground on the right, lower right of the corner, uh, that will be completely fenced and connected to the building, so you can from the first grade classrooms, uh, exit, or, uh, kindergarten classrooms, rather, exit directly into that, into that playground. Uh, both playgrounds have hard, uh, play areas adjacent to them, um.
Let me just add, um, I'm up here, so, because I'm, as I'm hearing you say this, if you're not familiar with these plans, but if you've never seen them before, you might go right left, what's going on? This, um, this is the main entrance, if you're thinking about Roosevelt, if you remember the building, you walk, there's that overhang when you come into the, into Roosevelt, this is all staying and being renovated, right? The main entrance, the offices, the cafeteria, the gymnasium. All this red is new, and it's now two floors and not three. What I wanted to point out was, this is completely new. If you've been to Roosevelt, in the front, there's this drop-off for buses and, and sometimes cars, and lots of times, parents are on Ogden Street, but we're creating a parent, a dedicated parent drop-off over here. So it's going to cut into some of that green space, and there's a lot of green space, fortunately, in Roosevelt, and so over here, we're, it's going to, um, to develop that. The playgrounds that were just mentioned, here's the existing playground, you can see when you drive around Roosevelt, that's for pre-K and K, they'll be able to exit, it's still out there, and then a brand-new playground for the building, which it hasn't had, uh, to this extent, next to basketball courts and that field or in the back. Does that help for orientation? Sorry.
No, good. No, that's okay.
Yeah.
Any questions on the site? So, uh, elevations, so looking at the, the kind of the front corner, uh, you can see on the left of the page here, that's the existing entry canopy, right in front, in front of the building. So the addition will be a, a brick building. We were able to find a brick that is very, a very close match to the existing brick of the, of the existing school, so the idea is to be contextual with that, with that, and kind of wrap it, the brick around. So it will be low-maintenance brick, uh, with some pre-PS concrete accents on it. Uh, so you're looking at the, the front corner, there will be a new, a new slate sign, and just to the right, that's the, uh, the playground for the, uh, pre-K and kindergarten classrooms. Kind of moving around the corner, so now you can see the playground is on the left, uh, you know, enclosed by a fence, and you can see the two-story, uh, brick, brick addition there. Um, there will be some areas, the stair towers, we're using just one color brick to kind of break up the, uh, the massing a little bit, but it will be a pretty, a pretty simple, um, you know, contextual brick building.
That's the.
And then, yeah, the cars, you can see, that's the, that's the pull-off for the parent drop-off. And there would be another canopy on this side, so the kids could go right into the, into the building there, there is a pair of doors there for entry. Continuing around the corner to the back, um, that's just the other stair tower at the other end, kind of the, uh, the back of the building, but again, just low maintenance and, and the brick elevation. Okay, so moving inside, this is a typical, a typical classroom, this is a kindergarten classroom. You can see, uh, earlier in the slide, we had the, the plan shaded, so this is orange, so there are some accents you can see on the floor, and some of the softening above the, uh, the cubbies. So you're looking towards the front of the classroom on the, on the right at the teaching wall, the built-in cubbies for the students belonging, and then coming down the left, which you can't see, is, is the caseworking storage within the building.
I can just interject, the classrooms, you'll see the fish desks, those are fairly purchased recently, so we're doing the inventory, any furniture that can stay, right, and that's been purchased, um, recently will remain in, in the classrooms. But also, the design, um, picks up on some of the elements that Franklin's renovations in their classrooms, the teachers really embraced having whiteboard that students could write on around the teaching center, and that's why, why you see that, lessons learned at MacArthur as well from that renovation, so there's a lot went into it in terms of talking not only to the teachers at Roosevelt, but also some of the designs that currently exist in buildings that have been renovated.
Yeah, so that, that white area on the right, where you can see the teacher standing, there is the display, interactive display board in the center, that white area, that's a, uh, magnetic whiteboard that surrounds it, so students can walk, teachers can write on that, students can write on that, they can, and just get the alphabet is, is up on, in this elevation. So, that's the kindergarten classroom. Fifth grade classroom, very similar, right? We just, you see the changing color, right, so we're on a different floor, different colors in the flooring. Um, again, the storage needs change a little bit by grade level, but typically the classrooms are, are pretty consistent throughout the building.
That would be a little.
So now we're into a little learning commons, so this is the first grade learning commons, again, color-coded, green and blue. Uh, here you can see a little bit more of the, of the color in the floor, um, and what you have here is, you know, the, the learning commons, each one is a little bit different. You can see where we've broken this up and we've kind of created some, uh, a little bit more intimate seating, uh, so there is the opportunity for smaller groups to sit on the bench, that kind of underneath that, that structure where you can see the people sitting, uh, little tables, and you can have some more, you know, a smaller group instruction happening there. Um, in the foreground, that's the, the main corridor, and there's kind of some storage that kind of separates the corridor from, uh, the learning commons area. So, um, these are a little bit different, uh, as you move through your grade level based upon what they, what they need to do in there. Um, the ceiling, you kind of see kind of a, a variegated ceiling material up there, that's acoustic panels that kind of add a little bit of, um, you know, obviously acoustic panel, a quality, but, uh, some interest for that, for that space. So, that's a first grade learning commons. There we go. So now, second and third grade, on the opposite side, we've got something similar to the right that's, that's up here where you have the small group, um, you know, opportunities, but now on the left side here, you can bring a whole classroom out there. So this is more open floor area, um, built-in benching again, so a whole class could go out there, uh, again, interact with whiteboard on the, on the corridor wall, so it just becomes another, another teaching opportunity, uh, where classrooms can collaborate, bring two classes out there, or, or, or mixed, mixed students out there. Consistent theme again, you can see the changes in the, uh, in the flooring and how the flooring from the corridor, uh, extends into the classroom there. So, the library, um, the library is completely new, it's in the addition, so it's a completely new space, and what we're showing here is, is, is two plans of the same, of the same space. We have your, obviously your stacked areas, but we've set it up so you can have tables for a full classroom, so you can bring a full class in there and then they can sit at tables, or if the tables were moved out, you can bring chairs in, and you can set it up for, uh, for larger reading, if you have staff meetings, so we've got about forty-five or fifty seats in there. So that's just the, the plan of the library. So, a rendering of what that library is going to look like. Again, we tried to bring in a lot of vibrant colors for the, for the elementary school kids, so what you see on the ceiling, those boldy colored, that's kind of an acoustic panel that hangs from the ceiling, it's kind of a felt material, so again, that offers some, uh, some, uh, interest for the, for the ceiling. We're due, we are, um, uh, creating a clear story, kind of like you have currently in our existing library, so we will have some high glass, uh, so to get some light in there. And again, main accents here being the, the red and blue of your school colors. Another view of the library, looking back, um, you know, more towards the, the entry and the, uh, circulation desk. Again, here you can see it's set up with the tables, um, you know, for the classroom Cafeteria, um, your existing cafeteria remains, um, as it is, uh, but we are basically, you know, giving a, a, a nice upgrade, so everything will be painted, the ceiling roof will be replaced, lighting replaced, um, again, we're using a similar acoustic treatment, uh, up on the ceiling that we did in the library. On the walls, you can see acoustic panels, that is a very loud and lively space, so we have some acoustic treatment in there as well. Uh, the front of the stage will be dressed up kind of similar to what you have here, uh, wood panel system across the front of the stage, uh, to give that, to, to refresh and that. The tables are existing, uh, those were recently purchased, so those tables will remain, the flooring will remain, um, and all the walls will get, will get painted. So, that's our design update. Did any questions on that? Timeline, so we are getting ready now, uh, to submit for our building permit, so we're hoping for about a two-month process to get, to get that through, uh, S E D. So we're hoping to get out to bid, uh, bidding in February, March, so we can hopefully award it your April board meeting, and then get, uh, right into construction. The way that the addition lays out, it's kind of outside of where your existing classroom, uh, building is, so our hope is that we can start and actually get on-site before school lets out. Um, you know, obviously the proper protections put in place, but we might be able to get in the ground, um, you know, prior to, to June happening, so, that's the idea. And we'll run through next year and the following summer of twenty-seven, uh, and the intent is to occupy the building or be ready to occupy in August, so if you come back for September of twenty-seven, you'll be in the new building. There will be probably some work still ongoing in the existing building and the renovated areas, so we're kind of thinking that we'll be substantially complete in August, and then through the fall, we'll probably be picking up some things and getting, getting finally complete by Christmas. Um, and then closing out is all paperwork and change orders and processing, everything with the, with the contractors, that should be done, uh, beginning of, of, uh, twenty-two, eight.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. So now down to the nitty-gritty plans, transitions, how we're going to support families, faculty, and so on. So, um, we've been working hard to look at the current enrollment, and now that the board's made the decision around the elementary attendance, and, and thank you, and, and those boundaries have changed, we have a clearer picture of where some of the Roosevelt students have been moving, um, in, in terms of, uh, those zones. So, in, uh, I've been with the P T A at Roosevelt, I've been making my rounds on the P T A's at One More, which is going to take place tomorrow night at Morris Man, just to go over all those changes. We have sent out the letter, I'm sure you've all received and copied the letter, just that, that those decisions have been made. And, so, um, at Roosevelt, there is a faction of students that will be, uh, in the future attending Calvin College. So the plan is that they will move to Calvin College next fall. It makes no sense to try to find a place someplace else in the district temporarily, right? But we know that twenty-twenty-eight, they're going to go to Calvin College. So, those are, um, the majority of them, those students are currently over in Carlyle Apartments. So my plan is to, um, have a dedicated in March, February, March, for the little bit closer to the time, time change, meeting in Carlyle with families, lots of support, lots of communication, uh, we'll go to them, let's talk about what's going to happen. The good news for them is they're currently point eight miles away from Roosevelt, they are one point two miles away from Calvin College, so they will be receiving busing next fall, which is really great, great for them. They go from walking a very dangerous path to school to having, um, having busing. So we know already, some of the students are going to go to Calvin College, because they're going to go there and they're going to stay there, that's their new, new school. The remaining population of Theater Roosevelt will be split between Woodrow Wilson Elementary and Morrisman Elementary School. I'm finalizing where that line is, but we're doing it so that families can stay together. So if you're familiar with that part of the north side of town, there is an overpass. They just, the city, fairly recently, in the past year or two, renovated that. We've actually been building that way for a while, when we're going up Shenango Street. The split's going to be around there. So families north of that line will go Woodrow Wilson. Families south of that line will go to Morrisman. That way, we're maintaining neighborhoods. Parents will have children in only one school. When the MacArthur flood happened, we had no other choice but to take K-2 and put it in Saint, or Saint, I say that. Saint Thomas, thank you. Don't like that. Well, Saint Thomas, and the three-five, right, went to a different school. Unfortunately for families, that may, they may have had a second grader in the city of Benton, and a fourth grader at another school outside the city limits. We'll avoid that. Same thing with Calvin Coolidge was renovated. We had, you know, K-2 classrooms in one building, and in fourth grades over here, fifth grades at East. They were all over the city. It's very difficult for families. So being cognizant of that, moving families into the schools that way. So that will inform, we will inform the families of their schools, meaning they'll get a letter saying, starting next fall, your child will be attending this particular school. In February and March, I'll be available at, as it says, school-based events at Theater Roosevelt, as well as have a dedicated meeting in Carlyle, because I am particularly concerned to make sure those families know you're moving, and that's it, you're not going back to Roosevelt. We can say it over and over again, but I think having a meeting in one of their spaces and articulating that's going to be fully super helpful. Then in late May, early June, what we will issue, and this is earlier than normal, but I want it to happen before school's out, so that families, so they can still contact Roosevelt as its statements, right? The transportation department will then give lunch, because they're going to have to have dedicated. Currently Roosevelt doesn't have transportation, so it's a walking elementary school. This is going to be new for families, right? Where is my bus stop for the fall? Where is my bus stop for the fall, so that I know where I'm going as I get to Morrisman, or as I get to Woodrow Wilson Elementary School? And then, of course, we'll schedule an event in August to welcome families to new locations. Now, this is a great for more odd schedule. I know that when I share this, I'll get to the faculty, and then there'll be other suggestions in terms of how to support families from the social workers, from the clinics, and so on. Now, a transition plan for faculty. So I'm going to the faculty meeting tomorrow night. I'm going to be sharing these slides. And I want to make this, you know, clear that the faculty is relocating, and this is a temporary relocation. So even when a faculty member goes to another building, they're still going to have like this theater Roosevelt halo around them, because I'm a theater Roosevelt teacher, right? They're not, even though if they're teaching at Coolidge, or teaching at Roosevelt, or teaching at Anderson, or else, they are, that's where they still belong, is at Roosevelt. Because ultimately, they're going back. Now, ideally, they're going to go back in a year. I have a realist, I've been doing building projects now for ten years. It'll be August of twenty-twenty-seven, it might be September of twenty-twenty-seven, or October, or November. Now, the architects aren't going to hear that. They're going to push, push, push to make sure it's August, but I'm also a realist. So in, so in November, I'm coming to the faculty meeting. I will share an update on the building. I'll share some of those very same slides. They've seen some pieces of this, because we, again, we've got their input on the learning comments. We've got their input on the classroom design, and so on. I will also then be sending out to the faculty members, all of them, a survey that I'm still in the process of crafting. And the survey is basically going to say, if you were to be relocated temporarily for a year in any one of these buildings, what would be your preference? I want to hear the voices of the faculty. At the same time, we have to meet the needs of our students, and we have to meet the needs of our budget. So I'll work with ETA, with the Agent Teachers Association, and the faculty to figure out, like, where am I going to go teach next fall? It's a little complicated by the fact that we don't know where all the opportunities are, because in mid-January, retirements are due. And so then we'll know really where all the opportunities are. Let me give you an operational example. If we have, let's say, three third-grade teachers, and let's say that the Roosevelt students leave Roosevelt, and some go to Coolidge, some go to Wilson, some go to Morrisman, that there's only a need for two third-grade teachers. That could happen because of our class sizes. Where does that third teacher go? Well, if we also know that there's a third-grade teacher retiring, right, from Woodrow Wilson, then that other teacher could go teach with their, you know, teacher that they're teaching Roosevelt, and take that empty spot for you, right? Maybe have a couple of Roosevelt, a couple of Wilson students, but then they could be teaching in that building. So it's important for us to first know where all the openings are, so that we can do the best job we can in relocating Roosevelt. I'm advocating that relocation of Roosevelt teachers is first present before we start filling the empty seats with transfers or, you know, any new hires. So then, once that, we know that information, then we can communicate with faculty in terms of this is where you'll be living in the next, in the fall. In February, early February, I will start to meet with the transition team. And if we did this, and we did MacArthur, and it worked very, very well, it will have, I forgot to add parents on there. It will have representatives from K-2 teachers, it will have representatives from three-five teachers, it will have a special area teacher on their building leadership. Somebody from central office who probably need from the beginning, and I'll probably work with Kyle Skinner, who also works on Capitol Projects, to be meeting with him. But we will start to meet every month, every other month as needed, all the way through the building of the project. And the reason for us meeting is to have clear communications. We don't want out there, hey, I heard that, no. The HVA system is delayed by, you know, eighteen months. We're not going to get in there now for three years, or something crazy like that. Those kinds of things can happen. And the communication, we want to make sure that people are hearing it from the source, so they know what's true, and what may not be true. Other things. Who's, how are my materials going to be getting there? The tiniest of things. This is an enormous project, so we have, we've had some experience. I've had some experience in doing this, but making sure that we're sharing it with people that it impacts, so that we can get input before we implement it. I've always found success in doing that, right? Just, this is what's going to happen. Challenge me, challenge the system. What are we thinking about? What are we thinking about? For example, I've already had a conversation with one of the faculty last year. We were talking about this, saying, our parents are going to need support navigating new systems, right? They need, sometimes they need support navigating Roosevelt. Now that's, except that we have a new building, it's a new principal. Our administrators are going to be split between buildings. How can we help them, maybe obtaining the resources that they're so used to getting by being able to easily contact, because we're dropping a student off and walking into the school? How can we help them navigate that? So looking at possibly like a parent navigator for a year, for a community school's closer, get aid back on that by using money that's in Rosi's budget, is one example of something that's already kind of come to mind, that would be super helpful. We have social workers, but social workers are working with students. They often don't have time to spend dedicated to our families. We will provide dedicated time for faculty to clean out teaching spaces. As a matter of fact, I've already spoken with the principal, Nicole, you know, who we've talked about, you know, how can we do this sporadically by getting creative coverage? We have a couple of hours, even right now, to start thinking about, are these materials that I'm going to need? Cleaning out of teaching spaces, a very delicate thing. There are things people hold on to forever, and there are other things, maybe this is a good time to say, don't need that anymore in my new, in my new teaching space, or in the new teaching space one here. So that we really have, you know, kind of cleaned out the basement, cleaned out the attic, so we know that ultimately, at the end of the year, we'll provide a dedicated time with the boxes for teachers to box up their materials, put their name on it, the building that they're going to go to. We have a sound system for transferring that material. Yeah, see?
I've got a couple of questions. I was going to wait till the end, and then, because we're going to forget or move on to something else. Can we go back two slides, just sort of, take a look at the timeline? Is there more my questions line, the construction timeline?
Oh, the construction time? Yeah.
So right here. So construction started in May. A lot of work is happening in May, because when the school year still be calling.
Sure. So as we were sharing, there's a whole new wing being built, which is going to require to take down the existing three floors of wing, right? But the new wing is being built on that existing building. So the thought from the architects and then the contractors is that over those couple of weeks or months, they can start to build a footer with a new extension. That's the construction we're talking about. Nothing internally, we're not doing any abatement, we're not going to be inside the building. It's all exterior, because then when they leave, that building, that new work comes down, it has to be abated, and it has to be, but they can start with footers, and that will actually save itself a couple of months.
So it gives you a head start, but it's not the base of work, as you know, away from the building proper, it's all.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
And then substantial completion until August twenty-seven. Building will be occupied, so we're looking to fall of twenty-seven if fate's cooperating with us.
Yep.
So, I mean, to me, it feels like a little different than maybe what we had seen before, because at least what I thought was, that will be fall of twenty-eight. So just wondering if anything materially changed or was out sooner, which is a good thing, if it happens, but maybe I.
Yeah, fall of twenty-twenty-eight is when we're acting the new attendance zones. Because we know that in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, ideally the beginning, at some point in that year, Roosevelt's moving back. So you don't want to have Roosevelt move back, and then new attendance zones in the middle of the year. That would be crazy. We should be changing classrooms, and people will be going to new schools. So it's the fall of twenty-twenty-eight, where the attendance zones, besides the Coolidge move from Carlyle over to Roosevelt kids over there, that's kind of like part two. But part one, no, we always anticipated it being a, I wouldn't call it a back year of build, you know, not just the twelve months that you want to capture, the three months prior, and then, you know, fifteen to eighteen months.
So let's just say we get to fall of twenty-seven, that means we're still under the boundaries we have now.
Correct.
Two bindings moving out.
Correct. Yes, exactly. Because it's, so we're just like Roosevelt students moving out, and then the same Roosevelt, with the exception of those kids who were over by Carlyle, moved back in to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, live that full year. And then it would be the spring of twenty-twenty-eight, where we would then remind those other students who are impacted on the new boundaries, that now they're going to new school that fall. Does that make sense? It gets very, very complicated. I can, I understand that. Any other question on the timeline? Okay. Yeah, other considerations. Did I cover everything? Yeah, I think just like that. So other considerations. The Teddy Bear Plan. Well, from the onset, when we brought said to UHS, we're going to have to relocate you there. Determined, I do not know the exact location, but determined to relocate within the Roosevelt community, whether that be in a van, or so that, because our families are dependent on that access. We also, I will work with the building leadership to have regular, put out a schedule for the full year, every other month, or however frequently, if it's more frequent than we may get, to have events within the Roosevelt, current Roosevelt neighborhood, right? So in other words, they always have a fabulous arts night, right? How do we create our partners? So partners for Roosevelt family, maybe we use the base of a church to do that, right? And partners can take place there, where families and students can come during the evening to work on a craft, and work on, in one of the offerings. We could always certainly do that back at Wilson or Man. The challenge with that is going to be transportation. So we'll see where, you know, where families are. But I think for us, we'll certainly go back to that school, that's fine. But my sense is that, in talking with some of the families, I'm appreciative of ours paying attention to making sure that their neighborhood, right, stays intact in the places that they know they can access. So that's the big, the high-level plan. A lot of details we'll go into, as I said, the moving parts in terms of where people are moving and how they're communicated with. But I think the shell for all of that and the details will fall into place. And again, I anticipate things being added to this, because I know it'd be amazing thinking of our faculty and staff. And when I'll be sharing this tomorrow night with the faculty, I'm sure they'll think, that they will be thinking about, when I continue to work with families, I'm sure that maybe things that they will bring up as well, that will add to the details of the plan.
How many questions?
Exciting? One last thing I wanted to mention is, when we had the original footprint, and I want this as kudos to our architects and contractors, they have been very thoroughly vetting the funding of this project. I don't want that to go unnoticed. And so, you know, we've had a lot of projections in terms of this is the nut. We know how much money we have. We have fought for these dollars, and, you know, got the support from our senator and assemblywoman, and we have the bucket rate of money. So we have to utilize that money to put this plan, that fifty-four million dollars, in place. We don't want to extend it. But we also know contracting, construction. I was just, I just heard, I read it this morning, about some new requirements for building, and building projects, and it was a thing that used in the district, it was really into another building in the region. And they were saying they're changing codes, and that might impact the cost to building, to renovating a space. So things happen that may change, so we have to stay on top of it, to make sure we stay within a budget. And so one of the changes you noticed was a three-K, K, learning comments, and then a grade one, two learning comments, and a two, three learning. There was originally a dedicated kindergarten comments, a dedicated first grade comments, a dedicated second grade comments, and the hall of this much wider. We had to sit down and say, we can't afford that. We have to, like, how do we trim this? And amazingly, you start to shrink a few things, it's square footage that comes off, and it's up, and you're already back on track. So again, kudos to the team for keeping all of that in mind, as we're purposely. We looked at the exterior of Roosevelt, and at one time, they were proposing these large panels, not wood, they were concrete, these large concrete panels that would kind of give a variability to the exterior. And we were thinking, maybe it'll save time, and it'll save money. The brick is actually more cost-effective. So we are paying a lot of attention to the cost to make sure we're staying on track.
Tony, I would like to acknowledge Tom and credit for their work. We schedule Capitol Project meetings frequently here. I'm on the Capitol Projects Committee. I do want to let them know that their work is greatly appreciated. They presented incredible detail on the construction, which you heard tonight is only part of it. And these Capitol Project meetings, they give us the district information. It's very valuable on the status of the program, and how they're coming along, week to week, day to day. So I want to thank Tom and credit their CSArch. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Sean, I will turn it back over to you for the update to the Policy Committee, and you can roll right into the first read on Policy Fifty-Six, eighty-one, on school safety plans.
Subject: Safety Plans.
Yes, you're up.
Thank you. The district considers the safety of its students and personnel to be of the utmost importance, and is keenly aware of the volatile nature of threats to schools. As such, it will address those threats accordingly. Their appropriate emergency response planning. The district provides school safety plan, and at the building level, emergency response plans will be designed to prevent or minimize the effects of violent incidents. Declared state disaster emergencies involving communicable disease or local public of violent incidents. Declared state disaster emergencies involving communicable disease or local public health emergency declaration and other emergencies, and to facilitate the coordination of schools in the district with local and county resources in the event of these incidents or emergencies. These plans will be reviewed and updated by the appropriate team on at least one annual basis, and adopted by the Board by September first of each school year. The board will make the district-wide school safety plan available for public comment at least 30 days prior to its adoption. The district-wide school safety plan may be only adopted by the board after at least one public hearing that provides for the participation of school personnel, parents, students, and any other interested parties. The district-wide school safety plan and any amendments must be submitted to the commissioner in a manner prescribed by the commissioner within 30 days of adoption, but no later than October 1st of each year. Building-level emergency response plans and any amendments must be submitted to the appropriate local law enforcement agency and to the state within 30 days of adoption, but no later than October 1st of, but no later than October 1st of each school year. Building-level emergency response plans will be confidential and are not subject to disclosure under the freedom of information law or any other provision of law. The district will provide written information to all students and personnel about emergency procedures by October 1st of each school year. District-wide school safety plan. District-wide school safety plan means a comprehensive, multi-headed school safety plan that covers all school buildings of the district, addresses crisis intervention, emergency response and management, and the provision of remote instruction during emergency school closure at the district level and has the contents, and has the contents as described in the Education Law and Commissionerate Regulation. The district-wide school safety plan will be developed by the district-wide school safety team appointed by the board. The district-wide school safety team will include, but not limited to, representatives of the board, teacher, administrator, and parent organizations, school safety personnel and other school personnel, including bus drivers and monitors. The district-wide safety team will consider as part of the review of the comprehensive district-wide school safety plan the installation of a panic alarm system at the discretion of the board. A student may be allowed to participate on the district-wide school safety team. Allowing student members to participate on the safety team is now optional but not required. Please customize accordingly. A student may participate provided that no confidential information is shared with the student.
Sorry, if I can just gently interject, because I think this is kind of a long one, so it's a good amount of reading. Could you just tell us which parts are new or, I guess, this is revised policy, where the particular, just recap where the blue lines are, like what it's about? And is there any question or comments on the policy?
Just summarize.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the changes to this particular policy, the changes to this particular policy revolve around the addition of a cardiac, a cardiac response plan encompassed within the district safety plan. As well as some other minor changes to the Commissionerate's regulation. That's pretty much what, you know, otherwise it's a safety plan that will be adopted at the beginning of the school year with the addition of the cardiac response plan.
Thank you. I, does anybody have any comments or questions, even the explain that we had just there, so we'll all leave place on that. Okay, great. Okay, we're on the second public comment period. Not a lot of people here still in the room, anybody like to? Go ahead. I know you know the rules, so.
I know.
Go through that again.
I'm Alice, I'm part Alice Johnson. I was just listening to the Roosevelt conversation and I do have questions. And I don't know how to formally talk to the board as a group besides this moment. And I think that the community as a whole is having a hard time doing that as well. Because we're not understanding how to communicate to the board in order to fully understand what is happening. So if, for instance, Horace Mann parents have a concern with the already packed busing or drop-off pickup zones and want the transition plan for next school year when we're adding an influx of Roosevelt students, how do we find that out? And how do we become more communicative as a whole with the board and with families? We're really struggling with that. I mean, I can email our superintendent, which is amazing, and she can get back to me. I have met individually with you guys and you have all been supportive of me and I appreciate that. But I still feel like we're at a loss for answers in regards to bigger things. And there are a lot of changes coming up that I feel like we're in the dark about, but we want to actively be here with you. And another example of that would be the teacher contracts that are coming up. What does that look like? I understand that we, the union is bigger than us and that the district is working with the union to come up with a contract. But that's due this year. We are going to lose teachers who are absolute gems in this district if they do not come up with a plan. And fiscally, we can't afford our, I mean, our teachers who have been here for a long time. So we're at this crossroads and we want our voices heard, but we don't know how to do that effectively and so that we are on the same page as you. And so there's a disconnect, because we feel like there are big issues coming up, but we don't know how to communicate that to you effectively. And, go ahead.
That's great. Alice, because I know you've got a major ambassador, you have office, you can answer any questions, you can reach out to all of us.
Yes.
Many of them, the two examples you just chose would be things that even if you ask board members, they would say, talk to me. It's not the board, that's, those are management concerns within the, within the district. That's why they hire a superintendent to address. But it's a building level.
Yeah.
If that's a concern, they should bring it to the building principal. And we have on our, on our website, who should I call? You start at the building level to get some of those answers. So for example, that's a concern about parent drop-off, bringing that to the attention of the building principal. The building principal, they're jacking, if she didn't have any answers, would call me. I would then have resources from the cabinet to go and have those conversations earlier than later. And with Solna, you came to the parents.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's, and we've also talked about, just, sorry, I'm here for breakfast. We've also talked about how do we help the community understand what the Board of Education as a whole does, right? In terms of their roles and responsibilities, different than city council, which is different than a board for the children's home, very different, you know, Board of Trustees and so on, very different. And what's a board meeting? What are we supposed to be doing at board meetings since it's a business meeting? And then when we have work sessions, what are those for? So you're going to have an insight to that, because I'm asking a major ambassador to say, what is it, those questions that are out there to help people navigate the board? But navigate the district, which most of the questions come up and ends up in my office at cabinet right in the building.
And I appreciate that, because I feel like us as a community right now, we do want what's best. You guys want what's best. I just feel like there's still a disconnect. And that, that helps and I appreciate you and thank you for listening to me after hours. How would I say that?
Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment portion of the meeting and move on to new business, superintendent's recommendations, certified C resolutions. Do they have a motion on Resolution C1 through C13, please? Albert seconded by Mary Ann. I'm going to go ahead and read C13. Resolution 2025-11-C13, retirement Jennifer O'Hare, whereas Jennifer O'Hare has served the Hamilton City School District faithfully and continuously since October 21st, 1993. As an English teacher, Laura's Jennifer O'Hare has submitted her intention to retire effective at the date of November 28th, 2025. Now therefore, it be resolved upon recommendation of superintendent of schools and the Board of Education accepts her request for retirement and extends our warm wishes and thanks for her service to the district. And can I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Sebersaw?
Yes. Certified certified CS resolutions, do they have a motion, please, on CS1 through CS3? Move by Shontae, seconded by Jazula. And who have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Sebersaw?
Yes. Non-certified resolutions, NC, do they have a motion on NC1 through NC7? Albert is seconded by Jazula. I'll go ahead and read NC1. 2025-11-NC1, retirement of Patricia Frew. Whereas Patricia Frew has served the Hamilton City School District faithfully and continuously since January 1st, 1990 as a teacher's aide. And whereas Patricia Frew has submitted her intention to retire at the end of the day, November 14th, 2025. Therefore, be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education does hereby accept her request for retirement and be in further resolved that the board extends our sincere thanks and thanks of the community for the efforts on behalf of the students of the district. And we also extend our wishes for a long, happy and prosperous retirement. With that, we're ready to proceed to a roll call vote.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Sebersaw?
Yes. And general G resolutions, do they have a motion, please, on G1 through G9? Move by Shontae, seconded by Albert. Let's hand up. And, let's see, there's a couple of things to read, please. 2025-11-G6, donation resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education accepts the following monetary donations and we extend our sincerest appreciation to Vision Federal Credit Union for a gift of $1,000 and the Trinity Foundation of South Central New York, the amount of $500. And with that, I think we're ready to proceed to our roll call vote.
Ms. Callahan?
Yes.
Ms. Middleton?
Yes.
Dr. Penna?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Sebersaw?
Yes. That brings us to a page from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you very much. There is a letter that's been going out to secondary families. Kind of reminding everyone that you guys may dream to call their moms and, you know, shorter, light sunlight days the importance of school attendance. We already have about 31% of our students, there's been about 50 school days-ish that have passed, that have missed five or four days. So that's the reason for the secondary, the elementary, they're far fewer. We've been sending out some regular attendance notices, but we need to share the data with our families. We need to understand the impact. Now, at the same time, and the letters also indicate that those who are in need of support will reach out, but don't hesitate to reach out to us as well to help remove barriers. Because they continue to be, we continue to be challenged by the chronic absenteeism rate. And I wanted to share that again, so you knew that was coming, you may not get a copy now for a week or so. Also, we implemented attendance improvement plans and our building principals have been doing a tremendous job looking at their families, who has had a history of attendance issues and bringing them in person or meeting with them virtually to go over, what are your current barriers? What can you do, what can we do as a school, what can your child do to contribute to success? And I've preliminarily gotten some feedback from principals and many families who have been really appreciative of that dedicated opportunity as a plan that's now articulated. So I can go in and look at a student, look at their attendance and actually see that documented. For some of our families, it is, it may seem, seemingly simple for us, but for some of them, it's helping them come up with, what are the routines I need to establish at night? So what time do you have a meal? Let's say no later than, what time do you go to bed? No later than, what time do you wake up? The night before, packing your backpack, those kinds of things. And families have been really appreciative of how, and they've stepped through that, particularly in the early, in the early years. And then success plans are put in place. If the student's behavior warrants a dedicated plan to support their behavior moving forward, our principals are completing those, that would complete those developments. Not that we didn't do it before, it's just that it was done in such a way that you couldn't capture it from place. And so I'm really pleased that, and as that information starts to flow, I'll share with the board and update on what those are kind of looking like and the success of those. I mentioned tonight during the presentation, I'll be going to Roosevelt's faculty meeting in November. And then going to proceed to go, be going to Wilson's faculty meeting, which will be in December. And then we're going to Horace Mann's faculty meeting in January. Because those are the faculties that are in Coolidge as well, are going to be impacted by the Roosevelt students moving out. So I want them to, you know, to honor them and also just share with their experience next year and have an opportunity to ask, ask questions. So I didn't tag that to the Roosevelt, but I just wanted to be, to be clear of that. And then lastly, we did a lot of celebrating and athletics tonight, well deserved. We have our fall playing Treasure Island, that's going to be this weekend, Friday and Saturday night at 7:30. There are tickets, two tickets for each board member available. I was hoping they'd be here today in hand, I was texting Arianna, so the portion will be over here tomorrow. I'll sign and reach out to you, if you want, if you prefer to have them sitting at the door, you know, I'm sure you're going to go to, we'll make sure that happens. Or if you have an opportunity to sit by and get them, please, please do. Our plays and our musicals are just second to none. I can't wait. But one of the best parts is going and seeing us do the mountain I've ever seen before, singing or dancing or acting. Because every year I say, how are we ever going to be back to this with those seniors graduating? And they manage to do it, so, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Our next regular meeting is going to be Tuesday, December 16th. We'll have Ben Franklin for our school recognition, look at the district's guidance plan, update from the Behavior Task Force. And the next part of this Roosevelt Transition Project. I personally can't wait to see this thing get started and start to go off. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Audio, Jazula then Albert, all table.
Hi.
Thank you.